I'm actually going to open the meeting tonight as the superintendent as we look to appoint a new chair. Until then however, I'd like to just turn the table over quickly to Claire.
Having finished my last meeting without having a comment, I just really wanted to thank everyone for the last year's work of work between the administrators and the school committee and the teachers on campus. A great deal of work has happened in the last year and everyone makes it appear to the public, I think, that this is all easy. And it's not. Sometimes behind the scenes, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, many conversations go on. We have bargained healthcare this year. We've had an MOU on stipends. We've had a new superintendent. We've had a project to look at the athletic facilities. And we have successfully passed our budgets in the town. So that's a lot of work for one year by one school committee.
And developed a strategic plan.
And a strategic plan, yes.
It's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot. So I just wanted to take a few minutes out of tonight's meeting to thank everyone for that and to acknowledge the great deal of work that's gone on this past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
And I couldn't agree more. It's been a great year, a very busy but productive year. And although I owe appreciation to all three chairs, especially you Claire, in my transition. It was so hugely helpful to be able to connect with you and kind of learn the ropes through you as the veteran, the senior person, I think, of the three chairs. Pretty close. But it's really been, it's been great working with you, side by side with you. And I'm also looking forward to working with a new chair. So with that, I will accept nominations from the committee for...
We'll like to motion that we name Lori Crusell as our chair for the upcoming year.
Is there a second? Discussion? That was easy. So congratulations. I'll take a vote, sorry.
I?
I.
You?
Okay, good.
Not I, I mean not... Not me.
Very good. So with that, I turn it back over to you.
All right, well, thank you. And now I would like to invite the position of secretary. Any nominations?
I'll hand them in. Claire Graham.
Second.
Yay. All in favor? Congrats Claire.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And do we make a motion for...
Oh, vice chair, I'm sorry. And I would like to accept nominations for vice chair. I just thought it was done.
I would like to make a motion to name Ann Hubby vice chair.
And any seconds?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
I.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, and we would also like to welcome our newest community member, Judy Miller. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to having you on the committee.
Very excited.
Okay, are there any community comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our staff reports. Okay, Mr. Kellett.
I just wanted to call attention to, on Monday the 4th, we had our arts festival, which was incredibly well attended. And it just, Kathy Simino and Tom Duprey, Jeff Herman, Janice Berry, it grows every year. And it's just a fantastic event. On next Monday, our 7th graders will have their field day and our 8th graders will have their luncheon hosted by Positive. And then on Tuesday, we'll have our 8th grade recognition night and our dance. And there, just in case anybody was wondering, there are six more wake-ups until our last day of school, which is Wednesday the 20th. We don't count on my house. And then also, I would be remiss if I did not mention again, Ryan Collins and Ashley Sharp, who are our scholar leaders. I had the pleasure of joining them and their families, as well as a teacher they had selected. Ryan chose Janelle Peralka and Ashley chose Kathy Boye to join them at an awards dinner in May. And it was an outstanding event. I do have to say this keynote speaker was a gentleman, I believe it was Randy Pierce, who was visually impaired and spoke incredibly about resiliency. Something that we want to investigate for our entire population. Paul, I have unless you have questions.
Terrific. Okay, hearing none?
Yes, I will...
Yes.
I definitely need to introduce Steve Fromblessky. He is our new assistant headmaster, who will be joining us July 1st. He has already visited a handful of times just to get a feel for the building and meet staff and students. So welcome.
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 Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Crusell. So obviously, a lot was happening at the high school last week. We had a very successful senior week of activities. We actually had our boat cruise the previous Thursday. And it was a baccalaureate, as well as a senior awards evening, and then culminated in really just fantastic weather for an outdoor graduation ceremony. I was really, really proud of the kids. Student speeches were fantastic. And it was really the culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people. And I think the kids and their families had a fantastic evening. So was really proud of this group. It's a really nice group of kids, incredibly intelligent, like most of our classes are. Some really, really good kids. Really caring awful lot about DS, and that was obvious in some of their work that they did, not only in their first three years, but also as seniors, with so much going on in their own lives, they still took the time to really care about their school and put forth efforts. I also wanted to compliment our spring athletic teams for another very successful spring season. We still have two teams that are competing, but we had many teams that did exceptionally well. We once again had a lot of individual performances this year in track and field that were phenomenal. And I continue to be impressed with a school our size, how we are able to do that. And the important thing to remember with these kids is they are truly student athletes. They are scholar athletes. And they are playing as amateurs, but they are putting in incredible amounts of time and effort in their sport, just like our kids in music and drama do. Yet their first priority and their first job of the day is to be the best student they can be. And the kids here at Dover Sherborne do that quite well. So thank you.
That's great. Any questions?
John, the four out of district students, are those students coming from Boston?
No, out of district meaning they were special education students who were placed out of district, but they are still, obviously, our students and they receive a Dover Sherborne diploma.
Got it. Thanks for clarifying.
And Lori, that reminds me, I just wanted to, John, on another front, say that from what I've heard, I really appreciate the extra work that Gardens does for all the students to ensure that they graduate.
Yep.
That they've done a phenomenal job to get this in class.
Right. Thank you. Pass that along. Appreciate that.
And having been through a few of these myself, John, putting them together is, you know, on back-to-back events, it's just, it's a harrowing trek. And I just know how exhausting it is. And I really appreciate all of your efforts, efforts of your team, because I know you can't do it by yourself. But that was a very smooth...
A lot of people.
It was a very smooth graduation, it really was. So kudos to you and to all your folks.
Thank you.
Can I just really quickly, this is not about seniors, it's about the underclassmen who have exams coming up and I've heard that they're having therapy dogs come. I just wanted to say...
Well, we were going to announce it tomorrow, but that's okay, no, it's okay.
I was just going to say, I think...
For all those students who are watching.
That's right. Our ratings are... No, Ann, that's perfectly, it's perfectly fine. So I was going to comment on it tomorrow. So, Ann...
I just want to say, I think that's amazing, awesome.
Ann Keegan and I have been working with a group called Golden Opportunities out of Wallpole. And we received permission from Dr. Kio and we talked about the logistics and all of that to ensure that it would be really beneficial, but to make sure it was going to be okay for all kids. Because for some kids, that's, you know, going to be maybe something different. So we decided that they will be in our courtyard. So, you know, any student who has an allergy or anything of the sort won't be exposed to that. We are going to have two to three golden retrievers on the first day, on Thursday, and then again on Monday. We were able to work with them because of a connection with one of our students with their senior project. And that young lady was working with these dogs who go through about two years of training before they become service dogs. So it's pretty intense. We got to meet one of the superstars. One of the dogs came to the senior project presentations. So, yeah, we are really, really excited and we think it'll be great for our kids. It was ironic, I was talking to a group of students the other day. I said, "What would be some things that, you know, would be great?" And they said, "Oh, if you could ever get dogs here." And I said, "Well, I don't know, we'll see what we can do." So tomorrow, we're going to do the big reveal and tell them that they are coming. So, Dr. Kio, thank you.
Very, very cool.
Not a problem. I appreciate the way you handled it. It was all in accordance with the policy. So very nicely done.
That's great.
Thank you, Ms. Terrific. Okay, any other questions? Okay, go on to Ms. McCoy.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd just like to say congratulations to the parents who have graduated seniors. It was wonderful engaging in the ceremony. My first Dover Sherborne graduation. It was lovely. So kudos to the high school team for putting it together and congratulations to all of you and best of luck to your graduates. So I feel like I'm doing the hokey pokey. I have one hand in this year and another hand in next year. And we all kind of do that. And, you know, I appreciate the patience of the leadership team. We keep getting emails from me asking about August and September and November. And they're like, "Hold on, wait a minute, we're still in June." So it's an exciting time. We have lots of celebrations going on, but we have lots of exciting planning going on as well. Dr. Kio and I have been busy planning for our July retreat. And all of the topics that we'll be covering in July are related to our strategic plan and what we're going to be tackling right out of the gate in September. So we'll be doing some work around RTI and cultural responsiveness, mountain security, stress relief, and a couple of other things. And we're already lining up professional development opportunities for our faculty, you know, starting in August, November, and into the winter. So we're well underway for planning for next year. And, yeah, it's very exciting. And as you probably saw in the report, we're going to be bringing the academic excellence or innovation committee back together to have conversations about now what our curriculum review should look like moving forward and what we should be focusing on in the supervision and evaluation process, but also starting to think about how we're going to integrate the social emotional learning and social justice and research strands into the curriculum. We've all been kind of waiting there, being, waiting to be touched and integrated. And now we're going to, you know, develop a portrait of a graduate, knowing that those skills are what we hope all of our kids to have when they're done. And then how do we take them one by one and pull them back through, all the way from 12 back to kindergarten? So, yeah, lots of work to do. Glad I don't have a summer off because I need it.
Questions?
Will there be a school committee rep on the academic innovation committee?
Yes, I'm hoping so.
So when we do our subcommittee things later, we should add that to the list because it wouldn't have been on the list before?
Right.
I'd like that changed, by the way.
Yeah, this is a great report. This is really exciting to read. So thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
So I have a report to talk about the professional development the department has engaged in and kind of a broad overlook of some of the areas that the staff and related service providers have been engaged in. And also, a statement about where our programs stand for the fall. Some of you came to the CPAC meeting, which was held last Friday, which basically was an hour and a half opportunity to engage in conversations with parents, with myself. So I think that the feedback that I've gotten from the CPAC chair was that it was well received. And she's gotten a number of emails indicating that parents were very happy with that opportunity. So that was, it was, it was nice to have and I would welcome doing it again and again. So throughout the school year, the special education department organized itself into small groups of, small vertical groups across the districts, across Dover Sherborne and the region, to form what we called choirs, only because we were tired of calling other, the groups by other educational names and committees or PLCs or such. So we called them choirs and we met and we discussed topics of interest to special education, which included the B grid, which is about inclusion and students with special needs and inclusion eligibility. That would be eligibility for special education. And the continuum choir, which was really, that choir dove into looking at the transitions for students from building to building in particular. So each of those committees met and then designed a half-day, designed a workshop to be held on the PD half-days that are district-wide. And so then again, the entire special ed department was able to meet and discuss these topics together and really build understanding and conversation across the district, which was a new opportunity for special educators and related service providers. The feedback was very positive. People appreciated the time to hear from their colleagues, both in the vertical representation and even just to have time to talk about certain topics as a school-based group. So both of those activities happened in the professional development half-day session. And also contained in your report is some information about the language-based program that continues at the region. We have one teacher at the middle school and one at the high school, along with an EA in each building to support those programs. We also have a life skills program at the high school and the middle school. Again, one teacher in each building to support those programs. The strategic learning center at Chickering has run for a number of years and the administration is looking closely at whether or not we'll run that program next year. We had a large group of students transition from that program to the middle school this year. And we're looking carefully at the individual students that will be in that program to determine whether or not it's best to meet their needs in that self-contained setting or in the inclusion setting. So that's sort of still under development. And the integrated preschools at both Dover and Sherborne, the preschool at Pine Hill, I believe, is all approved to be running for two full-day classrooms and one half-day classroom. At Pine Hill, given a small explosion in students' needs, particularly, well, obviously, at the preschool level. So we want to make sure we're getting all of the students into school and supported as well as they can be at the preschool level. And at Chickering, we'll run two full-day classrooms. Any questions?
Christine, is there, you said that students transitioned out of the strategic learning center at Chickering and to the middle school. Is there a comparable parallel program in place at the middle school that's a strategic learning?
Some of our, so it's really decided on an individual basis. Those students have transition meetings where middle school staff come down to the elementary for those conversations. And a very close look is paid to the students' evaluations and progress in the elementary school. So some of our students come out of the SLC and come into inclusion. Some come into needing some support and not a self-contained kind of morning program. And some of our kids come into the language-based program. So it's really, the data over the years has shown that the kids do not feed directly into the language-based classroom.
Do you agree, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Chris, I just have a couple of thoughts. As I read about the, I think it was the eligibility choir that due to the weather couldn't meet. It doesn't need it. Have you thought about maybe trying to video this? Just even casually on your phone? And then it, it will last beyond even that one afternoon? It just was something that struck me.
I think that's, yeah.
You can have a closed web page or something for your team?
Sure. That's a great idea.
Employees could refer to.
Sure. That's one of the things that Beth and I have been working on is how to think about continuing the growth that, or the opportunity that happens in a professional development and how do we carry that into our new staff so that they know where we're coming from or where we've been. We've been talking about that sort of piece of warehouse. But it's been interesting, as I've shared this information, how many good ideas have come up from people like yourself, Claire, or others who have said, "Where's the gen ed folks in this?" And so when we did hold the B grid choir, Beth and I ran that choir together, which was great and a really nice way for us to begin to dive deeper into that conversation around RTI and the experience for both gen ed and regular ed and how, where does that lie in our district?
It struck me that there was good information coming out of that and how do you...
How do you capture it? That's right.
Over the long term. The language-based program, I know we've spent a great deal of time and effort and want to succeed. And you say there's two teachers and two EAs this year. Do we have any feedback on how that's working? How many students are in it? What do we expect for next year?
Our numbers are growing considerably. I don't have them in front of me right now, but I can tell you that the, both programs are well populated for next year. And as we continue to expand into the high school or really support that growth in a systematic way, we're looking at supporting the 10th grade teachers that the students are engaged with. I think John can speak to the robustness of those consultations and the impact that that's had on teaching and learning for all kids in the building, but particularly the success of those students that are in the language-based program.
Yeah, there's been...
Were you talking like five, 15, 20 kids?
No, about...
12.
Yeah, about a dozen. Yeah, 10 to 12.
I just have no idea.
Yeah. And the high school faculty member has been fantastic. She has collaborated really well with the gen ed staff. She's a strong advocate. She's an outstanding instructor. And I've been thoroughly impressed with the work she has done this year and also her vision of looking ahead and anticipating things. For me, it's the best shape we've been in with language-based since I've been here.
That's great news.
Great to hear.
Can you, you know, some of the folks might not be familiar with LBLV. Could you just kind of break down quickly, Chris, you know, what that is and what those kids are struggling with?
Sure. So students that would fit into the language-based learning classroom are going to require additional, may require additional support or direct instruction in reading, decoding, encoding, and making meaning out of language. So the way that all language tasks are approached is going to need to be broken down in a systematic way that helps them to consistently access the information through strategies and applications. So in our middle school, we've been able to use the consultant, Ann Larson, to help all, to sort of create a cultural, a culture shift in the middle school. And that was done under Spot's direction to help all children to sort of begin to understand, you know, they use the same language or they just break apart text in a similar way. So they're given direct instruction. And our kids in the language-based program are going to need that direction, direct instruction for multiple years over time and multiple repetitions of those strategies and support to apply them. So our students are taught how to prioritize their work. They're taught executive functioning skills in very systematic ways in addition to the language interventions throughout the day. So they're given language support, they're given executive functioning support, they're given opportunities for repetition and practice. The EA is a facilitator in the classroom, in the gen ed classroom, and then brings that back to the small group where they engage in re-instruction and breaking down of language tasks. It happens at both levels.
Yes.
Can I just ask for clarification? Sorry, I should probably know this, but is it mostly like ELA or does it include like the language of numbers? So math as well?
It's math also, right Lori? It's always math. It's math also.
And that's supported in a similar fashion?
It is. All content areas are actually supported in that way. And we have been looking closely at how do we ensure that the language in math is well-supported and the strategies applied are, for language-based kids are applied across all settings.
Okay, thanks.
We had, we had a language-based teacher and two of our math teachers went out to a conference just last week for that direct purpose.
And then my last question was just the life skills program? A little bit about how that worked this year?
Yeah, it worked well. We have a shared space with our freshman academic support center and we're continuing to work on that space and have some additional plans on how we can make some modifications there. But it's a small cohort right now, but we're looking to grow. But it was also a very positive experience for the student, student's family, but then also the educator that we brought on board was actually doing some co-teaching in the science class. So it was fantastic. So not only was that student receiving support, but everyone in that class was receiving supports. And that student, as part of the life skills program, was also integrated not only into a number of different gen ed classes, but also fully integrated into a number of our activities and athletics. And so I think that that's been very successful. Lot of proactive communication home, which is critical too. And so it was really a good start and we look forward to seeing that program grow.
That's good. Good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Kio?
Yes. Again, thanks, John, for a great year-end. Very impressed with the students and congratulations to the graduates. We also had some retirees, which we're wishing very well for both middle school and high school. So I want to thank them for their service many years between Rebecca Vizelis, Casey Potts, and Callie Egan. Did I miss anyone from the middle school? No, I didn't think so. So that, between them, Callie Egan, is she 20 years? Roughly 22 years, I think?
I think it's 22.
22 years, and then 40 in '41. This is a lot of service we're talking about. So we're really grateful to these folks for the time and energy and dedication they've given to our school system. I wanted to bring to your attention correspondence I had with an organization, a gentleman from a company called Municipal Communications. His company has expressed interest in pursuing a cell tower on school property. And so based on a review of the 2014 analysis done by the school committee on which the regional school committee voted to take no action, and viewing this as an identical request essentially, I'm recommending that you not pursue this new offer. If there's any guidance from the committee on that?
Don't look through it before.
Comfortable with that?
I would say unless, unless it's a materially different inquiry, then I think that we would end up at the same place after a lot of work.
Right.
So unless it's materially different, I would support.
No action.
No action.
Any other concerns with that?
That's...
Okay, very good. The, along the lines of what Christine was talking about, you know, our special ed programs are going to be audited as part of the strategic plan, which I'm really pleased about because no one's perfect. It's always great to have another set of eyes look at where we're going. We've had a lot of change in the system. We've changed our philosophy a bit in the system, I'd say. In the past 10 years, we're trying to keep our in-house programs vibrant and relevant so students will stay with us, which is always the best-case scenario. That is the least restrictive environment. That's what's expected under the law. So, but we, we want to go through this process and see what these folks from outside have to say about the way we're doing things. So we had a meeting this week, in fact, with a woman named Dorsey Yearley. And Dorsey was the executive director of Edco for quite a while after retiring from the Wellesley Public Schools for 29 years. So my path actually crossed with her briefly, less than a year. But she has a stellar reputation in that system. And so we had a great conversation with her yesterday. And I think she really gets what we're interested in learning about. We had our reorg and some, some of the pieces of the reorg, we want her to take a look at and see if we can get some direction from them. And again, things like our strategic learning center program. We don't have one at Pine Hill, not that that's a regional committee issue, but it, it does affect the regional committee because consistency of delivery of services at those two levels as they come up here matters. So we're very pleased to say that she's willing to do this and is going to submit a proposal to us shortly. So, and she's prepared to start that this summer.
Great.
So she's going to try and interview as many administrators who are around this summer and reach out to important groups, obviously teachers and CPAC. Did I miss anyone?
You know, all the administrators, all, everyone in central office.
Right.
We're going to bring some of the teachers back in the summer.
We're hoping.
To hopefully do that, so that she's ready to go look at programs in the fall and have all, has all the bases. I think the teachers will be a lot less stressed if they don't have to worry about trying to fit in an interview when school starts.
Right. So, so that's where we're at with that. We will report out to the committee once, at the completion. Speaking of audits, I know that the security audit has been on people's minds throughout this year. It's been a lengthy process, but Synergy Solutions has completed their, their report for us. And so we've been reviewing that, their findings, and will be prepared to put something forward in terms of recommendations at the meeting on the 20, or joint meeting?
Eighteenth.
Sorry, 18th. I'm sorry, 18th, we would like to present an executive session. So that is good. And the rest, I think, speaks for itself. So that's pretty much my report, unless you have any questions.
Just, John, in the, in the past, either in June or September, we've had a listing of who are the new teachers and old bio or blackout resigns, just to figure out who's new on the staff.
Excellent. Do you remember, John, or any of the principals, do you guys remember when we did that? Was it June?
Probably. We're still hiring, so-
Yeah, I thought it was-
September.
I was thinking September, probably.
I think Cheryl usually sits together.
Yep, not a problem.
That's a great point. Any other questions?
Mr. Taylor, did, did Mr. Hoover retire or did he just depart?
He is coming back in the fall.
Oh, okay.
He will be retiring early fall.
Oh, okay. So we can thank him at that point.
Exactly. That's, that's kind of why I was asking him, because actually technically, he would be considered one of next year's retirees.
Got it.
Not to be overlooked.
Just don't, don't want to miss anybody.
That's correct.
Okay, Ms. Vettori.
Good evening. I have a couple of reports for your review tonight. The first one is the revenue report as of May 31st. As you see, there's no new variances to report. What I can let you know is that we did meet our budget for both athletic fees and parking. So any fees that we're collecting above that, then go directly into the revolving funds. And I can report where we stand with that in September when we give you your June 30th revolving report. But that's really good. It's the first time, I think, in a while we've met the budget for athletics. And what we've decided to do, I think in the past, we would just record it all in the general fund and then make a transfer at the end of the year. What we're doing now is just, once we hit the budget, any new funds go directly to the revolving and then we can sort of cut out that transfer, which makes our books a little harder to explain to the Department of Revenue. So we've cleaned that up and, but I'm, I'm happy to report that. And that just, we've really made some growth in our athletic revolving fund, which will come in handy down the road. We've almost doubled that fund this year.
What, what changed the driver? Like, how was it that the athletics met the budget?
Well, we increased the fees, if you remember, and we finally now have gotten to where participation has met where, what we were expecting. We've also tried to adjust that number so that we were meeting it, because we had been coming short. You don't want that in your, in your funds.
Right.
More realistic. Exactly. So it's, it's been a mixture of both, but we have very robust athletic programs, which is great. Very helpful. So there is, based on that, we're still projecting a positive variance of $30,000. But remember, we did turn back to the town $250,000. So I try to keep your revenue statement looking so you can see both pieces, but really see where we stand for this year. On the status of appropriations, the projections that I'm trying to provide are the ones that I'm certain of. Obviously, the numbers look a little bit bigger, but I would never want to make a projection that I'd have to come back and change. So the numbers I'm disclosing to you this evening are the ones that are in the book, sealed, and I know that those are going to be variances. Obviously, in revenue, we're still, I mean, in salaries, we're still having substitutes. We still have some tutoring going on. We'll still have our teachers doing some summer workshop days before June 30th. So there is still a lot of activity that is not known exactly right now. Still, over time is another one. So as, obviously, as we come closer to June 30th, we'll know exactly where we stand. But as of right now, I'm projecting at least $45,000 as a minimum of a positive salary variance for fiscal year 18. On expenditures, basically the same thing. There's at least a positive variance of $100,000. That will either increase, most likely will increase a little bit once we get closer to the June 30th. Keep in mind, we're down to talking about less than 1% of the budget that's left. And things can happen on plant and facilities. That's why I don't want to be too aggressive in what the projections are, because as the air conditioning, we haven't actually had to have the air conditioning on that much, but we are seeing some issues with some of the units. So there's still some pieces that we have to take into account. But I think all in all, we've had a really good spending year. And I think all the departments and everyone on campus for how they're, I think, more strategically looking at how they spend money. I think everyone's rethinking some things and finding smarter ways to do it. And I appreciate that and I, hopefully that's going to pay off in dividends as we continue. The most exciting thing we had was our healthcare enrollment. And it was hectic but productive. And Tricia Schmidt, who sort of covers that for us in the central office, and I were, got a little giddy because it was fun to get, we had purple forms. So when the purple form showed up in the office, we knew we were getting someone of like, what did they decide to do? So we were pleased to report that-
It's like the lottery or something.
Exactly. Over 40% of our employees did elect to go high deductible. I think our incentives provided them with an opportunity to try it out without having any personal financial harm. So we're really hoping they have positive years, a positive year experience and want to continue, because that would be a great direction for us.
And pass the word along.
And pass the word along.
A great direction for them as well.
Exactly, exactly. You know, we did have some incentives to entice people to move to lower-cost carrier plans, and we did have 11 employees move that direction. And as you know, we elected to give an incentive for opting out. And as of today, we have at least five people who have taken that option. What will happen is, what we're doing right now is confirming that they do have insurance on the other end. And then they will stay off of our insurance for a whole year. They'll get their incentive payment next June so that they, if they can come back on, they'll be prorated, but that's a sort of exciting thing. And made, I think it was really good for consumers because it made everyone stop and think about what their options were, how they can go about looking at this and saving money for themselves. But definitely savings for the employees as much as they're savings for the employer. So I'll be happy to be providing you sort of a summary of how that's all going to shake out in September. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you to your department and all the people who are associated with the education and the PR and the actual giving sign-ups, because I know, having worked with Claire and on, on the subcommittee, that there was a lot of skepticism about whether or not the incentives would have any effect on people's decision-making. And I think that it's a combination of the incentives, but also your work with education. And I, I thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I have to applaud the employees because they did come out to learn. I mean, we had over 120 people attend our educational session. So there's a lot to be learned.
Oh, yeah.
And so we will still hopefully provide educational sessions going forward, because we really want to make sure people have the tools to be able to successfully, successfully have a HSA high deductible plan.
Yeah.
That's really important. And we've, we sort of, has stress to employees that we, we intend to invest in making sure that they know what they're doing. So.
And I have to say, if I may-
No, of course not.
This, this experience for me, because I was not in a regional system, was new. The town administrator and the town side really dealt with insurance in my last experience. And to watch how we handled this, the thoughtfulness, the, the amount of time, the use of the consultant, the consultation of attorneys, to make, to make sure that what we were presenting our employees was, in fact, what's common in the marketplace. So we're current as well, which I think is really important. Our teachers are getting an education about what's current in the marketplace. And I think this is going to, this is another kind of human benefit. It's, it's not just about, you know, money. It's about taking care of our employees as well and making this a positive thing for them. So I also want to compliment all of the folks who made this happen.
So what we'll do is, once you make your committee assignments, that is one committee that will probably reconvene sooner rather than later, so we can make decisions about, unfortunately, it's already time to talk about fiscal year 20. But knowing that that is something that we will jump on early on in the fiscal year.
And I would concur, because I know both of our sending towns, and particularly Sherburne, is wanting to make sure that we were on top of it earlier rather than later. And I think it's important that we be responsive to them.
Exactly. So you'll be hearing whoever signs up again. We'll be hearing.
A couple of them.
There'll be a lot of good opportunities next year. So the others-
Just hang in there.
The other piece of business tonight is to conclude our discussion about ways to handle or to manage our surplus funds in the most responsible way. So what I, what we're bringing forward to the committee tonight is one of the things that we talked about last month, but it is basically voting to deposit your June Chapter 71 transportation fund into your already established regional reimbursement transportation fund to offset, it'll offset the revenues this year so that we'll be able to dip into our E and D, but then have your money set aside. It's complicated, but let me just get to the end of it. What it's going to allow you to do is not exceed your 5% E and D this year, but it will dip into your E and D if you take that money next year and put it towards future capital projects. So it's a way, it's, it's an in and an out of funds. But it will prevent us from being up against every year at that 5% and always having to worry about what we should do. We know that the towns would be more comfortable if we were like 4%, 4.5%. This action will put you into starting to get to that point, which I think they'll be beneficial, but at the same time, it preserves some of the savings that we've been able to provide this year, and it keeps it in the region versus splitting it back into the towns.
Especially since we know we have big capital needs coming in.
Big, exactly. And that's the reason. And that's the reason. I mean, there's multiple reasons, but that is one that we can really hang our hat on to say, we've got a million two, which play estimated to be our fiscal year 20 request. If we can, you know, put $250,000 somewhere and know that that money's available to add to the pool of that fund, then that does take financial demands off the towns. And then you may even decide to put even more if you want. But I think that it also gets us down to a point where it's just easier to manage the budget. We've, I think, made huge strides, the region, on how you use E and D for your budget. I mean, it's really amazing if you think about, there were some years where we were using $750,000 of E and D to balance the budget, and we're now down to 150. And, you know, that's, I think, tremendous progress that we've made. And I also think that there's, things happen that we have no control of in the past. You know, we've gotten extra revenues. This will give us a way to be able to contain that at the, at the region level and not have to worry about giving it back to the towns and then going back the next year and having to fight harder for the money. So I did provide a motion, a sample motion for the committee to opine on. We don't really have the exact number because we don't know what our June transportation. It's always where we are, sometimes get a little bump. And so it will probably, it will be at least $220,000, if not a little bit more.
So at this point, other questions? Or would any, I'd like to invite anyone to make the motion or make a motion?
Yep. Want me to make it?
Yep.
So, if I'm reading this properly. So the regional school committee, having authorized and established a regional transportation reimbursement fund, RTR, in 2015-
No RTR.
RTR. In, in 2015, according with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 233 of the Acts of 2014, hereby-
Would like to make a motion?
Yeah. Moves, move to, right, to deposit the June-
No, approves.
Approves?
We approve.
Oh, we approve the deposit?
Hereby approved, right, hereby approved the deposit of the June 2018 Chapter 71 Regional Transportation Reimbursement to said fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal year in accordance with Massachusetts General Law.
And basically, just so you know what the general law is, we have to spend it next year on transportation. So we will apply our transportation bills up to whatever amount we put in to that fund to deplete it.
And any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. So just so you have it, so I gave you a restated revenue statement, assuming that we will not be having the regional transportation revenues coming into the general fund this year. So that's the last page.
Thank you. So I was trying to figure that one out.
Yeah. So that's just, yeah, so the 201 that was left in the budget is now, it won't be coming in, and so that makes you have a negative revenue. And that's, that's going to start depleting your E and D.
Thanks, John. That's great.
And then I just give you a quick capital update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Perfect. Okay, so we do have a guest speaker that we're very happy to invite to talk to us today about the athletic facilities Phase Two update. Yeah, come on up, Ms. Robbins.
Why don't you come up here and we'll move to the slides? Is that okay, Chris? Because are you, you're using slides, right?
This is Chris Robbins.
Are the slides on?
Yep.
Black or on the white?
On the white.
They're coming on the white.
So why don't you go over where Andrew is? Because then you'll be on camera and the slides.
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself. Perfect. Thank you so much.
If you touch it, it will advance.
Touch, just touch the screen?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? Oh, because it's a PDF, right.
I'll just scroll down. So you just scream it, not scream it.
Excellent. Well, by way of introduction, I'm Christopher Robbins. I'm the president of the Boosters, and I'm here to certainly represent the Boosters, but also to represent a whole lot of different interest groups across both Dover and Sherburne, from the families, the student athletes, the youth and, and high school athletic programs. And I'm here tonight to bring you up to speed on where we are on Phase Two, but also hopefully get you excited for the vision that we have and to discuss some of the things that I think collectively, we all need to understand in order to make this vision come true. Just by way of a little background, many of you know that the Boosters is all about sport, celebrating sport and using that as a conduit to create community. I think it's also important to note that in a lot of our conversations, there's just this collective belief, community-wide, that the regional school campus is certainly one of the greatest assets we have, if not the greatest asset, and that there's interest in wanting to invest some more time and energy and resources in making it great. This is a big project and we, we're sort of viewing this as an opportunity to create a proverbial barn raising for the entire community and certainly to collaborate with all of you, because we know that it will take all of us to pull this off. But also to, you know, represent some of the interest groups that stand to really gain from this, particularly a lot of the youth athletic programs as they come up the curve, and just make sure that we have a clear vision for how people may access the fields themselves. Just real quick history, this is now going on eight years, if you can believe it. Back in 2010, the Boosters and my predecessors raised a little over a million two to create a master plan and to build and construct the Norris-Surrell turf field. And Phase Two was the least sexiest title for everything that essentially didn't get accomplished back then. So there has been a lot of iterations that have gone on over the years. And when I took over at the Boosters in 2017, we dusted this off and have formed various subcommittees and steering committees and had a whole lot of conversations, not the least of which many have been with, with Jeff and his crew about the, these ideas and the proposed scope. I, I don't really intend to go into the existing conditions in detail, other than to, I guess, point out the obvious, that if we look across the, at our respective public school peer group, we are undisputably the leader academically, but many would argue- And as evidenced by the master plan that we developed, it's now going on eight years where there are many fields and that are in disrepair that really could use some upgrades. So this is our existing setup, and the fields themselves sort of lay out the way Jeff and his team think about the use of our fields. So this is our vision. Notice the word feasibility. We have not conducted a final feasibility study. That's a lot of what we're going to discuss tonight. But let me just explain briefly some of the aspects of this, and then I'll explain to you as many of the considerations that we, that we took into play here afterwards. So some of you may or may not know, the tennis program is out of compliance with only four tennis courts. So behind lots of discussion, there's a desire to want to build five new courts. We need five to be compliant and place them over on this Junction Street field, which currently is only used by the football program, and many would argue is in such disrepair that this would be a great spot for some tennis courts. It's out of the way, it's out of the wind, and is a good use for that space. A new basketball court to really meet that community and some of their needs, a second turf field over on Lake Street to complement Norris Erle, two new grass fields, and finally, the consolidation, if you will, from two baseball diamonds and two softball diamonds to one significant investment in a baseball diamond and one significant investment in a softball diamond that we feel will meet the needs of all the programs and work within the confines of Title IX, which I'll mention. And finally, again, just acknowledging, this is a big project. The facilities, the maintenance, the athletic department could really use, at a minimum, some support with respect to their own maintenance and storage, so we'd like to include that in our scope. So my next slide really is just touching upon a year's worth of considerations, which I'd never be able to bring you up to speed on all of them, but some of them that were key. There was a lot of talk about, hey, if we were going to do this, could we make do with just grass and not introduce a second turf field? And there was really an overwhelming feeling that, given where we are in New England, given the strengths that we can face in, in the spring, that a turf field was really something we wanted to include in this, not the least of which we know the impact it'll have on the programs for many years to come. As I mentioned, Title IX, this has come up countless times, and just wanting to make sure that we, we comply here, we certainly have seen other programs, our respective neighbors, work with one baseball diamond and one softball diamond and still meet everybody's needs. And I think in the end, we felt like the pros outweighed the cons of doing away with an existing JV baseball diamond and an existing JV softball diamond, which are really not used very much to begin with. Some of these other ones that have been brought up countless times, the wetland, the setbacks, the orientation, sunlight, some of our existing irrigation, the existing conditions, ADA compliance, there's a lot of, we're out of compliance in a lot of instances with ADA. And really, the programs themselves, so the high school programs, what are their needs? The youth programs, to obviously a lesser extent, what are their needs? We did really look hard at the backfields, the booster backfields, and the net-net of that was because there is a road that really couldn't be upgraded, because it goes through wetlands, and because it may trigger some handicap issues, should we do anything on those backfields? We just felt like those are really not a viable option for us and that our focus would be on the fields down on the main campus. This timeline is not meant to, of course, hold us to this timeline, but simply maybe to highlight the fact that we really do feel confident that we understand the workflows and the action steps that are going to be required to pull this off. We estimate this to be maybe a three to four million dollar project, so there's going to be a significant capital campaign that we will need to mount. I will tell you that for many who have heard about a, we're trying to be conservative here in this timeline, but for many who have heard of a possible start date of 2020, that has been met with a lot of disappointment, that the idea, if we could accelerate this, is in the interests of many who would love to see their respective athletes maybe even be able to participate here. But just bearing in mind, knowing all the steps that we need to jump through and all the variables that we'll need to work through, this is a draft. So really, why am I here? Well, the Boosters were poised to go spend another roughly $15,000 for what we're referring to as a final feasibility study. This would really, this would take about six to eight weeks. We would work with an already identified engineering firm that has done these projects countless times to give us a very detailed, line by line, this is what's feasible, this is what we can accomplish, and this is what we think the estimated cost would be, plus or minus 10 or 15%. So we certainly don't want to go spend money that we don't necessarily need to without, I think, all of us just understanding some of the things that need to be not only understood but addressed in order for this thing to, to play out. One of these is advertising and sponsorship and naming rights, which is not something currently allowed on the regional school campus. So the idea is, our vision is, how can we work together to make sure that there is a road paved or a door opened through which we can explore that? Because that is pretty integral, as I will explain to you in a later slide, that that's part of our long-term solution. Secondly, this turf replacement, as you all know, it's expensive to replace the surface on artificial turf. It was brought to our attention that if we so chose to introduce a second turf field, that it would be our responsibility to come up with a solution for how we would replace this second turf field in the 10 to 12-year timeframe that it typically requires replacement. We have drafted a solution, which I will share with you the details. We've socialized this with a bunch of interest groups, but again, this is one of those things where we really need to work together to cross the Ts, dot the Is, and make sure that we're all in agreement about how that solution would play out. And finally, this notion of field rental or even just sharing of the fields themselves, there, there's a big opportunity here for all of us to benefit from what we hope to create, but I think we also need to work together to create a viable solution that works out the details about how these fields are allocated, who is responsible for allocating, and how those monies flow, and where those monies then sit with respect to the rentals themselves. And finally, just a field matrix themselves and working with, hopefully, Jeff and his department to flush out a field matrices that would show not only the respective needs, of course, and the priority of the high school programs, but how over time can we weave in some of the other youth programs who are deeply interested in wanting to support this, but of course are also interested in making sure that there's something in it for them long-term, should they come to the table initially. So this is, this is kind of the conclusion of what I wanted to share, and there's a, there is a slide that details the, these are some of the participants that so far have played a role over the last year-plus in all of this. We have a Phase Two Steering Committee, of course, the Boosters Board has been involved, and a subcommittee comprised of Dana White and Ann Hovey, who has helped us create connection with some of your interests, and of course, the administration, and a whole lot of people in the community. So how do we come up with $500,000 to $600,000 in 10 to 12 years? We have had a series of conversations, again, primarily with the youth programs, that feel very open and willing to consider a $15 per player, per season field maintenance fee that would get collected per player, per season, and go into escrow over a 10 to 12-year period so as to account for what, you know, on an annualized basis, may be between $50,000 and $60,000. This would include the field-based high school teams, not all the high school teams, but those student athletes that are using all the various fields and stand to gain from that. That's where that 470 number comes from, which is a subset of the 900 average student athletes in the high school. And then, of course, I've written partial here on field rental fees. I think the opportunity to, for the, for the regional school district to gain from a more comprehensive and organized field rental program is much greater than this, but that plus some corporate sponsorship. And again, this is, this is, I think, low, the idea being that, one idea, for example, maybe a dozen banners around the Norris Erle field that are teed up and offered to corporate sponsors that would pay, again, on average, let's say, $1,000 a year to be represented around the field. This is where this number comes from. So again, the collective pie is largely stemming from a player maintenance fee, if you will, but also incorporating some of the field rental fees and some corporate sponsorship, which is, of course, still yet to be determined with regards to bylaws that, I don't know if bylaws have already been written or would need to be pulled out and rewritten, but as relates to my comment about sponsorship and market. And again, not, not, not to gloss over the importance of some of the variables inside of this, of course, sponsor management, who would be accountable for managing the sponsorship year over year, the, you know, whether $15 is the right number. We haven't had conversations with the field hockey program. The initial take from the baseball program, the youth baseball program, was that they didn't necessarily see what might be in, in it for them, and so they may or may not be interested in participating in this, but they also really haven't had the opportunity to hear the full scope of what we're trying to achieve. So there's definitely groups within here that haven't yet been discussed or spoken with, but of the numbers that are here, this has been certainly endorsed conceptually, knowing that what would need to fall in behind this is some accountability and some binding agreements, if you will, that, that some of these programs would know that at certain times, at certain seasons, they would have the opportunity to enjoy what would be a significantly enhanced set of facilities. The only other thing is project timeline. There's a lot of different ways to execute something like this. We really have no idea whether or not all of this could be done in one summer, or whether or not it would need to be cut up over maybe multiple summers, or whether or not there's even flexibility in working outside of just the summer months. But all of those obviously play into the scope of work, how quickly we could get it done, and subsequently then who stands to benefit from it, which would influence, of course, our capital fundraising campaign and who we're approaching. Those who didn't feel like they stood to gain anything from it, you know, we may miss them depending on the timing of it all. And again, not to rush through it, but I certainly wanted to get to Q and A and make sure you guys had time to ask any questions about Phase Two. And thank you for your time.
Great. Questions?
So first, thank you to your committee and to Dana and Ann for obviously, clearly a lot of hours of work on this proposal. My question is a little bit directed to Mr. Parcells, is, if he, if you're available.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So the sharing, the field sharing in this proposal and the breaking down to the single baseball, softball fields, if this vision were, were to be enacted, how would that impact the high school practice availability? Do you feel like, having sat at the table for all of this, you're comfortable with this degree of field sharing?
After listening and being a part of all the meetings, yes. I mean, my initial concern was, I hate losing fields.
Right.
But to be honest with you, we do not use the JV softball field. We have not used it since I've been here. The JV baseball field, which was the old varsity field, which is that, Chris, if you could point to that one.
Yeah, over there.
That one is so, it's in disrepair right now, that we have not used that at all. So where we are right now for the high school programming, I think we're fine, knowing that, you know, we will be utilizing those fields in the spring to roughly 5:30, quarter of 6:00, you know, every day.
Okay.
Because Jeff, for softball, well, we don't have a JV team at the moment, right? So that's why it's working.
Yes.
But it doesn't matter.
And the way baseball and softball runs, if the varsity teams are away, the JVs are home, so we would never need two fields at the same, two baseball fields at the same time. They always play opposite each other. So it's really, it's not a, not a big.
And does it affect town?
How does the practice work?
Town, the practices?
Practices, a lot of the practice, practices that they do is shared stations. So, you know, we utilize our JV and varsity coach and a couple volunteer coaches to kind of break things up, use the facility all at once. So we seem to get everything in.
Do you anticipate with this, if this proposal were the proposal, that you could still run the sports programs you're running now, even with the demand a little higher for shared field use?
Everyone needs to know that we're going to be using the facility from, you know, 2:30, 3 o'clock, you know, we usually start our practices at 3 o'clock, except on Fridays. We need to have use of those facilities till at least quarter of 6:00. All of our requests for facilities don't come in until 6:00 PM anyways, so I don't see it being a hindrance to our program whatsoever.
That was part of the discussion, Jeff, with the, with your group, Chris, that you were factoring in that the outside organizations wouldn't be using these until after.
I have always made it very clear that these facilities have always been first priority to the high school programs. And I think the idea is that by adding a second turf field, by adding a few new grass fields in here, that it will create some space in usability, and therefore, there will be some free time on the calendar that we may use to continue to enhance the high school programs, because one team would really benefit from playing on turf versus practicing on grass, but also just taking into consideration that with that increased availability, that there would be real consideration made to some of the youth programs at various times in the season. In the case of baseball and softball, some of the youth programs can't actually use a regular-sized diamond, and so that could very well be why maybe the youth programs may not see. may not see total value for themselves in this type of program, whereas soccer and field hockey and lacrosse and, I mean, obviously, those programs do stand to gain, provided there's, you know, provided we can find some extra time in there and make sure that relative to whatever exposure they get today, there's something added to that, I think that that's where the expectation lies.
Can I follow up on that? Would we, as a region, be willing and able to make a commitment to the youth programs that you will get X hours every week from, obviously, at, let's say, 6 o'clock till 7:30 or whatever in the fall? Because it seems like that is what, if I were a youth leader, I would want confirmation.
So I'll speak to that.
Okay.
So I had an email from Adrian Hill, who can't be here tonight because his fifth-grade soccer team is in the state cup.
And they won?
Oh, they're in, oh, wow.
Yep, they're in the state finals.
Oh, nice. But one of the issues, it's my understanding by email from Adrian, from the soccer club, is to commit to that money donated to, or paid for the use of the field time would be, have to be some kind of an agreement that you'll have certain hours or certain days or X number of total hours, whatever, in order for them to sign up to say, I'm going to pay you $20,000. Otherwise, I believe they have a Plan B to do something else.
Correct.
So let me do a dress up. There has never been an issue in the spring. You know, this spring has been, has been great, you know. The problem that we run into as far as rentals go is in the fall when we have less light. You know, it gets darker a lot earlier. When the clocks change, we have to deal with that. This spring, the way that we, and I say we because it's kind of a combined effort with myself and Chris Hendricks, our head of grounds, we run into a lot of issues with the grass fields with it being super wet. A lot of the youth programs use the upper fields, the upper booster fields, and those fields hold a lot of water. And there, we have irrigation breaks. We just had a massive irrigation break early this, late last week. So the turf, we have never said no, and I say we because I guess I'm the one that has to approve these things, we have never said no to use of the turf, ever, for any, any group. For grass fields, usually in the spring, I'll talk about the spring, the girls' youth lacrosse utilizes a farm street field, that's the one that's painted strictly for girls' lacrosse, and boys' youth lacrosse will use one of the upper fields. We have three lacrosse fields in the spring, two for our boys' teams, and then one for youth. And then they combine, share the turf field when we have it available, if we're not playing a night game, this is different nights. The fall season, it seems to be the season that we just have a lot of issues with, because we're relying on grass, we're relying on not a lot of light, especially once it gets deeper into October. Again, use of the turf field, it's open for, you know, we've never said no for the turf field. The problem we run into is we have to rest our fields every once in a while, just as the towns do. You know, if we're putting our varsity lacrosse, let's say they practice every day on field two up top on the booster fields, you know, Chris wants to shut that down in the fall because it's just really gotten beaten up. So those are the issues that we run into. Nobody likes to hear, sorry, the field's closed, but, you know, they're hearing it from Carroll Field, they're hearing it, you know, from both towns, but when they hear it from us, it just seems like it's a very frustrating ordeal. With this new configuration, we're gaining fields for lacrosse and soccer.
Field hockey also?
And, yes, field hockey. Our field hockey program will, majority of the time, would be utilizing the new turf field, because they actually take up a lot of our Norris Earl turf, Norris Earl turf time now, and that will allow the soccer teams to better utilize the turf field. You know, the spring, I mean, the fall is when we just have so many teams that use the turf. You know, every one of our teams want to be on turf.
So the answer is probably no.
No, I feel confident with the added fields, that we're going to be able to free up more space, because, you know, we're seeing that new grass field where the former, the old baseball field is, that's not currently there. So that's a whole nother field that we can utilize. So if we, you know, shut down a field up top, now we have this one to actually bring online, which we didn't have before. Where the tennis courts are, that's a new field, so.
So the question will be, is it enough time for soccer to want to pay the money, I guess? And lacrosse's decision.
Because there's no lights, no new lights in these new configurations.
That was my question. No lights?
No lights.
No tennis lights?
No tennis lights.
Okay.
So we're also not talking weekends, that that's, so we're not, this, high school teams aren't using the fields in the weekends that much, and that's when the youth games for soccer and lacrosse tend to be. So that would be a time they could use the turf.
Absolutely.
And so you could run back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back soccer games, even in the fall, and they would still get their, they could still get their eight hours of week use.
But they're not getting it practices.
They're not getting the practices. It's both, because if you have to then make up games because they had to be canceled because the field wasn't usable, that actually eats into your practice time too, so I think that's something to think, they need to figure it out. But that's, I think, something we have to make sure is in the, in the equation. I need to say that very clearly, because you can get, if you have two turf fields, you get 16 hours over Saturday and, more than that, over Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, we do have, I mean, we do have teams that do practice on the weekends. Usually there's, like, in the fall, our girls' soccer team will be practicing for a two-hour slot, our boys' practice for a two-hour slot, and that's usually on Sundays because we play on Mondays. So they have Saturdays off, we have to have one day off per MIA rules each week. And just know that with moving practice football field where the, where the tennis courts are projected to be, that means we need to move football. So my plan is, if this all goes through, we would move football to the upper fields, so they would have one football field up there, and football, they do, they beat up a field. But the good thing is, where it's currently at, that's one of two pieces of property on our, on our campus that are, it's not irrigated. Up top is irrigated, so Chris can, you know, can keep up with that a lot more than he can keep up with Junction Street Field.
So, Chris, to go back, you do field then, so it sounds like you've done the calculation, you've made the matrices, and you feel like you can make a commitment to the soccer and youth soccer, youth lacrosse, all the other ones that do sign on board. Is that, is that something you're comfortable saying?
With this setup, there will be more access for all of the groups, with the exception of baseball and softball, because that is not changing. We're not gaining anything there.
And it's yet to be seen by any of the boards of those youth organizations, is that?
Well, we haven't, there has been, the matrices have not been designed and created yet to really flush out where the openings lie. Yes, the, the hope and the expectation is that this will free up some real space where the Adrian Hill and the other youth leaders could see, hey, okay, great, this, this is where there are windows of opportunity, but no, that, that work is still yet to be done.
So I just have a couple of other comments for especially new school committee members or people who haven't been close to this project, and I haven't been anywhere near as close as Dana and Chris have been. I believe that the cost of the replacement of the current field, Don, is estimating at about $800,000.
Eight or $900,000, I think.
So you guys were talking $500,000 to $600,000? So in the last 18 months, that price has gone up, so just if you're aware of that in your calculations.
Can I interject? A lot of that has to do with the foundation of, the condition of the foundation of the existing field. So it's usually not, they don't have to redo the whole thing, they have to resurface it. So that's why it's not the same money as, as a brand-new one, and a lot of times, if that drainage is in good shape, it's not as expensive. It's still somewhere between $600,000 and $800,000, is my understanding.
Right.
From my past experience.
And the inside, our inside.
On-site insight says it's industry. So that's, that's the capital figure that we're working with.
That's what you're budgeting for Norris Earl?
For the Norris Earl, yep.
Is $800,000.
So that means that we'll be in 2020.
Yeah, keep in mind, that is an inflated number, because that's not on the, the books or the fiscal year, 26 years out from now.
In 3% a year, right?
Yeah. So the cost will be for the Norris Earl field, and then adding the additional $600,000 to the second field. ADA compliance, you mentioned, we are compliant now, it's just if we do renovations, we trip the law.
I guess that's what I meant, yeah.
Correct? Just in case anybody's thinking we're not compliant, we are presently compliant.
Right, right.
It's if we do renovations, then we trip the.
Trigger that.
Trigger the thing that you have to do something. In terms of the feasibility study and procurement, it's under the threshold, I believe, Don, so.
Yeah, and they've had three, they just need three solicitations, and they've engaged three different people to talk about this.
Great. And then the Regional School Committee work, to me, and we've said this all along, has to be done on the naming policy and corporate sponsorship, and what does that look like? Because we'll be setting a new precedent, not only for field and athletics, but it could be interpreted for a number of things all over campus, so what does that mean to us? The $15 extra athletic fee needs to be thought about. In terms of our athletic fee, we've had discussions about what is that amount? It is the one of two things that we can only charge, so that would be on our plate, and that money would falls to the school district. I don't believe that money would go to another third party.
So can I add to that? So that's something that the committee needs to think about. If, you know, from time to time, you need to raise athletic fees, this would essentially be saying, well, anyone who has, who's using fields is going to have an additional surcharge on their athletic fees, which in and of itself might raise some questions. Some people may ask, you know, well, my kid's never going to use that, but they're being charged the fee. It's just something that needs to be considered.
Exactly. Or.
Right, because we've never had two-tier fees.
We don't charge more for hockey. We always go back to this, we don't charge more for hockey, we don't charge more for football, the expensive sports.
Those of us who've been down for a while know these things can become contentious issues.
So that's why I'm just raising that these are things that are up for discussion. And I believe that if we were to charge field rental fees, that money comes to the district.
Right, it goes into your building fund.
So how that's formulated, we would have to have some discussions about whether it's a stabilization fund or some other method of using those fees.
No, you can still earmark it, you could just earmark it in your building fund to go towards future replacement.
And, and how does that, and I would hope we'd have some discussion about, what does that mean about replacing the first field? What is it, you know, which field is that money going towards? How is there, something that we can bank on, that we put the $600,000 in the bank so that in 10 years it's there, and we're not having to go to the towns and say, oh, we don't have it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So those were just some of the things, Chris, that I thought of. I know you've.
Well, that, that is certainly something, as I'm sure you know, the Boosters is committed to making sure that, in this go-around, that there's, there really is an explicit attempt to create structure guidelines or separate escrows or however the, the money flows, but also where it sits and how it's managed, just so that, yes, you're right, in 12 years, we know it's there and we don't have to look elsewhere.
Laurie, I guess this is a question for, for the committee and for you as the chair. Can we put a timeline on scheduling a philosophical and maybe taking action talk on the issue of naming things this year? Just because wherever we go with that or whatever we decide, I do feel like it's, in fairness, we need to resolve that issue so that you guys can move forward with your planning.
Absolutely. We're going to have an agenda-setting meeting over the summer, and we can find a place for that. That's very reasonable.
That's great.
And that's the policy committee, isn't it?
Yeah.
To have the policy committee look at where it used to be.
Okay, great. Because I do think that timeliness of that decision affects your timeline, so the sooner you can know what the parameters are for that sort of thing, the easier it will be to go forward with.
I just have one more question for Mr. Parcells. I like seeing the maintenance building. Now, is that, I mean, the, for, is that going to alleviate all of athletics' storage issues? Or is that just, for, for example, a shed for the back football field or something? Is that going to take care of all your problems that we've talked about for the last several years in capital?
Depending on, on what type of structure it eventually is, I think a lot of it has to do with the grounds department.
So it's in conjunction with the grounds department?
Sure.
It's not a separate facility?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, would I be utilizing some of that space? Absolutely. I mean, our inside athletic storage is, is really not much.
Right.
Do we need to do anything new for football up top? No, we already have a container up there where they can keep all of their pads and things that they need for football. Right now, the athletic department has three containers, and the phys ed department has one that we have onsite.
Can I ask a logistical question, Chris? Why not, when you do this image, not include the other two fields, just so that people have a sense of.
The, the back fields, you mean?
Yeah. Are those up top fields you're talking about, Jeff?
Yeah, the upper fields, upper booster fields. It's the ability to have three, three fields up there.
I just think for perspective, I think, frankly, if I were an outside organization and I saw this, I'd be wondering, how are we going to actually have field space available up there? It doesn't seem like it's creating that much.
Right.
But it's not factoring in that those other two are really being fully utilized, especially in the fall.
Correct. There's three out there.
Sorry, three.
We utilize the upper fields for, basically for practices only just because of, you know, if we have, you know, elderly fans or someone in a wheelchair, it is a long stretch up there. We don't have water, so we have to have, you know, portable toilets up there. So we basically use the upper fields for practices. The youth programs do use the upper fields for games.
And the short answer to your question is, using an image that includes those practice fields, at least me looking, looking into the screen is, right, it's, you're just dealing with a much smaller profile, but I'd agree with you, it puts it into perspective that there's another three fields that are critical to the, to the total matrix, to the success of the plan.
Yeah. Maybe it's just a two-pager so people can scroll to the other.
And, and the other thing I think we need to acknowledge is, this is a huge project. It would most likely fall under the business manager's office, as it has in the past, because it's a district project, whether we hire a construction manager or a project manager or whatever as part of it. It is happening at the same time as contract negotiation is happening, as I assume there'll be another round of healthcare, and I just need to raise forward that it will strain the main hours available for this and other projects.
Good point.
So we need to be aware of that, that's all.
Any other questions from the committee?
Can you ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm curious about the basketball court, because we didn't talk about the use of it at all, or what, who would use the basketball court?
Community. Currently, we don't have one on campus, so that would just be an added asset to the, to the campus.
As long as Central Office doesn't have to have a basketball team. I was worried about that.
Our boss is a former basketball player.
I was, I was worried about that.
Your system out there every afternoon.
The door out the side of the.
Right out there.
So I'd like to thank Mr. Robin and his team, because it's really informative.
Do you need something from us?
Well, I definitely need some clarity around our ability to go. Well, I definitely need the, some clarity around our ability to go, or at least knowing that some of these aspects of that long-term maintenance, whether it's the sponsorship, even the, the fifteen dollar fee or whatever that number is with the high school field-based programs, these are pretty key to that number that we hope to accrue year over year. So, yes, I think the naming rights and the advertising piece and this notion of layering in a small maintenance fee to the field-based programs, those are, those are pretty important, as well as a field matrix, because I think that the youth programs will have a hard time getting behind this if they don't really have a clear path to how they may get access. That's not to say that we have to come up with specifically on Thursday at four o'clock, this team's going to get, but certainly flushing out a field matrices that showcases the increased usability and the way in which we could conceivably spread the, spread the peanut butter.
Because it seems like we're in a bit of a...
Right.
Chicken and the egg circular reference, whatever you want to call it, because you guys want our general head nodding to be able to go and spend fifteen thousand dollars to continue the feasibility study that will give you the line item estimates for all of these different aspects of the project and to be able to know what that big number is and also what could conceivably be pieces of that project if the big number weren't possible. And yet, we want to know that there's comfort in being able to replace a turf field or do maintenance, which we can't know until you know how much money it is. So I feel like we're in a...
Right, and, and just making the decisions on the athletic fee and the policy and blah blah blah, we have to have our little subcommittees go away, do the work, that's probably, you know, at best four months worth of work by the time that summer's scheduled. So I don't know that...
I mean, we can, we can say there's...
Anybody opposed to spending fifteen thousand dollars and coming back and saying, this is the plan, but we don't, as a committee, can't say to you tonight, oh, yes, we can solve, you know, the athletic fee, the, the naming, blah blah blah, without having done the work.
Yeah.
But it seems to me that we all agree that it's, it's a great idea and it would enhance the campus and the school. So it seems to me that it, because we kind of, I don't want you to go spend money needlessly, we obviously have things we need to tackle, but if we say that we're going to tackle those, outcompeting, if that's enough for you and us to say, we love the idea, we just have to make sure we have questions answered, does that...
Well, I didn't expect a vote necessarily tonight, of course, knowing that it wasn't, but at the same time, I think, yes, the Boosters is looking for the desire, the enthusiasm, the interest in wanting to tackle some of those issues, knowing full well that, yes, we don't have a, a fully flushed out, this is what the replacement cost is going to be in twelve years, although that feasibility study will probably do its best at estimating, hey, if we put this turf field down, this is what the replacement cost could conceivably be in twenty thirty-two or whenever it is, including inflation, but that also, we know, is a number that would be an estimate.
So, and for me, I, I personally like to know what that costs, but also, when I look at that cost, I'm going to say, okay, what does that mean for the district and what does that mean for our budgeting for the next ten or fifteen years? And it might be the best plan out of the box, but I go, I can't afford that plan because I can't, I don't have the money to maintain all those fields and I don't have the money to replace them.
So I agree with you, Chris, I don't think a vote necessarily is appropriate today. I think people are excited to hear more information, but I don't know that we're ready at all to tackle anything close to a vote, other than to say, this, this is a great plan and it's, it's really exciting stuff, really, really happy about so many of the changes, the tennis field's over there, makes so much sense, a lot of it would be great.
Of course.
And we're excited for more information. Is that kind of summing up?
Yeah, and I would concur, as far as, I think the plan is clearly, has, I've seen various presentations and various iterations of this plan, I feel like this plan attends to a lot of the concerns we've had along the way when we've looked, we've looked at different things that have come up. And I feel committed to being an active part of addressing the issue of where we stand on naming rights and sponsorships and all that stuff, also addressing, looking at, there's some other issue we have to talk about, oh, the fees.
F one's fees.
I feel confident about wanting to address that in a timely manner that will, will meet your needs in the fall. And I would love, if you go out and get this scope, to see the scope and also phasing options. So if we can't get behind the whole plan at, at one time, there might be options to do parts of it that might be easier to bite off. That would be my, what I would love to see come out.
Now, that's a, that's a hugely important component to the feasibility, is determining how...
Right.
How might this unfold?
Because we might all say yes, and then we can't get to the four million dollar number.
Or whatever the number is.
And then, so what do we, do we parcel it?
This is an awesome watermelon, how can we, if we have to bite it off?
And on that visual.
So is that, is that good? Are we good?
We're good, thank you.
We're good, thank you so much.
There's a lot of work.
Thanks.
It was a great presentation.
It's kind of like my earlier comment, a lot of work goes into something that takes the work, so...
You know, this is not just five PowerPoint slides.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, are you almost ready?
Yep.
Great. Student handbooks.
So should we start with Scott?
Sure.
The changes for the middle school handbook are essentially what you saw last month with edits from our attorneys, Joan Stein. It did take a lot of the verbiage out of the dress code, but I think it is something we can improve. Worthwhile.
Right, I'm looking for, I'm not seeing the middle school one, am I...
It's after the high school one, high school first and middle school.
Sorry, all right, so where...
Where, where does it, what page does it start on?
I don't know, Dr. Athletic?
No, oh, no, no, it was, it's before Athletic, after the high school, before Athletic. Oh, there it is. That's the dress code one.
Proposed cha, cha, oh, I see.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah, yeah, I got it, it says proposed changes to the middle school parent's student parent.
It seems very clean and simple. And it puts the responsibility where it should be, which is at home.
Right. More gender neutral, good ideas, all good stuff.
Yeah, I have to say, I really like these changes to the dress code, because it's much more gender neutral.
Mm-hmm.
And it, and it gives the school some flexibility as well.
Right, at the discretion of the...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. It's great, great job.
That was Joan Stein, she's the one who did the edit, so...
Perfect.
I appreciate that one.
And John?
Want to cover mine?
Yeah.
So same, same situation with Scott, we also had Joan Stein review ours. You see the, the ones that are highlighted in the yellow were sent back and Ann made changes as recommended by Joan Stein. And it is the same information that you saw the last meeting. We did take out some language, I believe Joan had said something to the effect of, under the last change, under rules for social activities, school staff will determine what type of dancing or behavior is disruptive, it just made it, Joan felt like cleaner.
Yep. And just for the committee members' edification, one of the things for the absence or tardiness, change from eleven o'clock to nine fifty-two.
Can I ask a question? Are you going to, I hope that you publicize that widely next year, so that everyone, the students, the faculty, and it's reiterated, because that eleven AM rule has been around for many, many years, and you want to make sure everybody's aware of it.
Sure.
Is that something they're wrong? Unless you hit it home, they won't be aware of.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
Great job, do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept. Both of those will be accepted. Second.
Perfect, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. It was great. Okay, and agenda item number eight, athletic handbook.
So the athletic handbook, as we had stated before, it was really just to bring the athletic handbook in line with what we already have in our student handbook and student program studies, so there's really no change, it's just aligning them so that they are all accurate, and that was something that Ellen Shagden, the Director of Guidance, and Jeff Parcells worked on this year to ensure for eligibility purposes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And for the new members, the important thing is this has also been approved by the athletic advisory. Great. Great, other questions?
Yes. Are we moving to approve it?
Oh, let's move, yes.
Make a motion to approve the changes to the athletic handbook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
At one point, we'd asked if these could be online and not just a PDF, that you could actually be able to look, search through them or...
Yep, we're going to work with Anthony Rotacco this year to create the files and that. Yep.
So you'd see the index and you could just click on...
That'll be really helpful. With that nine fifty-two, right on the front.
But the mean thing.
Okay, are we ready to move on to school improvement plans?
Yes.
Perfect. Want to start with the middle school?
Sure. I just, I first want to thank our school council for the work they put in in developing the school improvement plan and the, beyond the school improvement plan, the other conversations and dialogue we had regarding the ethos of the middle school. What we did, we have three goals that we've outlined in the school improvement plan, the first two of which come almost, I think they're directly from the strategic plan that the school committee approved that Dr. Keough developed with the leadership team. The first is around health and well-being of students and staff, and it's to revise and enhance programs in support of social, emotional needs of students and staff. The, several of the, the pieces of evidence of accomplishment will, are ongoing, one of which is our continued work on the RTI program that Mr. Maringer spearheaded with the committee that, this year. He is meeting with that committee and Mr. Oboleski is coming over to join them this week because he's, he's ready to jump in and between he and I, we'll make sure that that continues to move forward. We had conversation with Jill Arkin and Christine Smith to see how special education can play a role in that, not that it's a special education program, but are there resources we can use to help students come up with strategies before they might need special education services? That is one of the pieces where, as mentioned earlier, we're awaiting the synergy feedback and we have plans to have lockdown shelter-in-place workshops and also training for the staff in early October. We'll continue our work with Roots and Wings and that, actually, we'll have an initial meeting. It's a combination of a getting feedback on, from the Roots and Wings kids we had this year and then students who will work into next year. And that will incorporate some rising sixth graders as well. Another big one is, we are going to pilot a change in our bell schedule where we will have about a eight-minute, seven or eight-minute break after lunch, where weather permitting, students will be able to go outside, so that seven or eight minutes of additional time could actually be more if students are done eating. Staff is very excited about that. When the weather is, it's either too cold or raining, snowing, they'll return to their classrooms and have just some downtime, similar to what the high school does, but ours will do in the afternoon because our first lunch is actually a brunch. Next year, first lunch will start, because of taking two minutes from each period, we'll start at, I think it's ten nineteen.
Oh, yeah. So that's how, I wondered how you came up with the seven or eight minutes.
We got, we got two minutes from each block and three minutes from the beginning of the, beginning of the day.
So we've heard, we've heard a lot of feedback, I've heard, certainly heard a lot of feedback about trying to find some downtime for our kids. I really think it's important, it's something that existed, believe it or not, when I was a kid here, I think it just mattered, whether it was just for the socialization, we know this is, our kids are not socializing the way they used to and it's, it's good for them to, it might not be easy, but it'll be good for them. And the air is also very good.
It'll, it'll be good for staff as well to have a, just have a chance, and it won't be advisory, but when they're inside, it will be downtime where teachers can have a couple of minutes to make connections with kids, so that, that too is healthy.
And you don't, you have, I mean, it's in the policy, but kids don't have access to phones and stuff during that time, so it's not going to be kids sitting in class like that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, no, our students...
Be like talking to each other like human beings.
Just like.
They should not...
In the locker, they will be out in this break. In the new policy, we have just...
Right, I did read that, yes.
This is great, thanks. Any questions? No, okay. Mr. Smith?
Okay.
We need a motion to approve the middle school improvement plan.
I make a motion that we approve the middle school, school improvement plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, this is terrific.
Okay. Okay, the high school, school improvement plan has some overlap and some similarities to the middle school, and similar to Mr. Kellit, we also look to connect it to the strategic plan. Our first goal is kind of a continuation goal because it's something that we found was really, really important and it's something that we need to continue to develop and work on, create, foster and implement culturally responsive programs that will inform, educate, support and improve our school community. It ties in with the strategic priority of ensuring the health and well-being of staff and students, and a couple of different things that are going to happen. So difficult conversations about race is going to be implemented next year, that's a DSCF grant that we delayed for one year because of some transitions and some different things we were doing. Thanks to DSCF, I also received a grant to train thirty students in a World of Difference program through the ADL, and what's great about that is, we will actually have a couple, we've identified a couple of staff members who will be the point people for that, and we'll train up to thirty students in ways in which we can develop positive school culture and ways in which we can continue our communication with each other. And I point back to some rather unfortunate incidents we had this year with regard to some graffiti in our bathrooms, and it was really interesting because things stopped when students took a stand. And we actually had, it was a very interesting and symbolic stance taken by a couple of students, one in particular, senior, who said, "Smith, would you mind if I got a group of signatures together?" And basically had a little blur put outside the boys' bathroom that said, "This is not who we are, this is not what we want to be represented as, and you should know that if whoever you are, whoever the person is that is doing this, you know, the following students will no longer sit idly by and allow this to happen, we will report you, we will turn you in." And we had about three hundred and eighty-five kids sign it.
Wow.
And those still remain on the doors, they're a little tattered now, I think they're really symbolic, and the graffiti stopped.
That's terrific.
It just shows the power of students, shows the power of peers, and it wasn't, there weren't threats made, it was just, we're not going to stand for this, and it stopped. Now, that doesn't mean that we have solved all of our problems, hence, here's why we need to continue looking at it, but that's just another example.
John, if I may, that, and if I remember correctly, that came right on the heels of your assembly.
Yeah, it did.
Where the kids basically took control of the situation.
Yep.
In a really positive way, it was, it was a very powerful assembly, and I mentioned that to the school committee before, but this is fallout and it actually... And I mentioned that to the school committee before, but this is fallout and it actually made a difference.
Yes, it did.
Which is awesome.
Yep.
Good to hear.
And some of the other things that would continue, so some of it will be staff-based, some of it will be student-based. We do have a group in the high school called The Conversation. We do see some turnover when those students leave and they graduate and we get a new core group of leaders that come in. But we're hoping to see that continue to grow and expand and have more of those opportunities. And we're actually looking to set up one of our conversations and to formalize it into an assembly with smaller breakout groups. So that's, that's one. Our, a second major goal is going to be reviewing and researching our mathematics curriculum, which ties in with the strategic priority of ensuring world-class curriculum, instruction, and assessment. As some of you may know, science and engineering and technology have already gone through their first and their second year. They'll now be in their third year of some implementation of their action plans. The English ELA curriculum was on the table for this year and they began the review and the revision and next year they start the implementation. So next year, it's mathematics' turn. And that's, that's a K-12, right? A K-12 initiative. So that will certainly be something that we'll be working on. And even though that's just for math, keep in mind, we already have two other departments that are also currently working on that. So we're getting to the point where virtually every major department is, is involved. Our third goal, which was something we discussed frequently at our school council meetings, and that's the safety plans. Create, revise, implement a new set of safety plans that address the need for increased safety protocols while still maintaining the campus structure that our school community desires. You know, it's an important question here because we want to, we want to find that right balance. We want to find that balance between maintaining what works for us as a community, what our kids enjoy, what our parents enjoy, what our educators enjoy, with finding ways to increase our safety on our campus while still maintaining some sense of an open campus or some sense of some freedom and flexibility. We have, our science department is located in Scott's building and a lot of our students will access Mudge Auditorium and Linkwes Common. So we're a little different from your traditional high school that has the four walls and we have to look creatively at that. And there are many aspects of that campus component that I really actually enjoy. I think it's fantastic that our kids have that flexibility. We just want to also make sure that we're thinking of other important considerations because, you know, the feedback from our, our parents and our students is, you know, there are concerns. There are concerns with the number of doors we have. There are concerns with the entry. There's a lot of different things on the table. And similar to Mr. Kellett, I'm curious to see what recommendation synergy is brought forward for us. And we're looking to partner with Scott because we do share the buildings on kind of finding that balance.
One of the things we've already done, after the meeting we had with staff to hear their concerns, is we closed the doors down at the far end of the science wing, which doesn't sound like a big deal, but it now forces people coming into this building to come into the main corridor where it's much more visible, where their...
Right. Yeah, which is, it's the door over here in the corner and you could enter the science wing by the parking lot. And, you know, we had, we had families and we had students say, "People could just kind of slide in." And, you know, nobody may even see them. And it's a good point. Scott and I talked about it and we said, "All right, let's develop a plan." And the high school students have responded really well. And they just simply come in through these doors right over here.
The two doorways right here in the middle of the building. Simple, but...
Yep. I closed a door that, that would normally lead to the second floor where the special education office used to be upstairs. That door now, you actually have to walk around. And students can still exit through there, but by walking around, it just greater sightlines for the main office administrative assistants to see people coming in. We've also implemented visitor tags and some different things. Ralph has been great about working with vendors to ensure that they have and sign in and check in because, you know, there were some times when they might start in the middle school and, "Oh, I'm just going to go to the backfield." And no longer do we allow them to do that. They have to check in at each respective building.
This is great. Thank you. And we'll look forward to hearing more about this in executive session. So that's perfect.
And then finally, the last one on the back page is the NEASC accreditation process, which I've talked about at several meetings. We will be submitting our proposal, our focus areas to NEASC this summer. They will be coming out in October for a two-day visit. It's a consolidated visit. We will certainly update the regional school committee well in advance to let them know that they are coming. They may want to talk to school committee, but they actually, this is more building-based. It's their 2020 visit when they will do more of the interviewing all stakeholders. And that, once again, ties in with the strategic priority of a world-class curriculum, instruction, and assessment.
Terrific. Any questions?
Can I just really quickly just add for the first initiative? Just potentially consider including special education and kids' learning differences and emotional health as parts of things, of groups of kids to consider who may have been not treated as well as potentially they... I'm not spaying correctly, but anyway, the ideas that those are two groups, I think, that need to be included in those that are being discussed as you examine how we treat others.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Pretty much, I think...
Set number one?
Yeah.
Under, under reasoning. I think really what we're talking about, I assume, John, based on our conversations that we've had as a leadership team, is basically any students who could potentially be disenfranchised, which would definitely include...
Which is, which is great. And I hear you that. Just as you look at the people who are responsible, there's nobody that represents
I see.
those groups.
I see.
So I thought that perhaps that should be...
Yeah, and that's fine. Central, by central administration, I certainly meant the Director of Special Education.
Yep, that makes sense.
So yeah, so just clarifying then.
Sure.
But I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'll bring that back to school council at their first meeting in the fall.
And did we let you down and not have a school committee?
We didn't, I couldn't get one. Uh, no, no, we, we did. We had people, but we, people just didn't attend.
I, I was apparently the main person, but I was never aware until, it's my oversight that I was supposed to do that. I'm so sorry.
No, I just didn't know what.
So give it to her again so she...
So I will, I will make a motion to help Laurie along.
Thank you, dear.
And approve the high school school improvement plan for the upcoming school year.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee assignments.
Can I say one thing before we begin?
Yep.
Laurie, we, I just want to remind the committee that we're looking at a start time committee next year. We're looking at a communications committee. And as Beth mentioned, the academic excellence innovation committee. So those should probably be included as well.
I'll add healthcare and OPEB.
I was going to say employee benefits.
Employee benefits and...
Yeah.
Healthcare, OPEB, and employee benefits?
No.
All three?
Healthcare, employee benefits.
Healthcare is employee.
Oh, okay.
Just employee benefit. Okay, so. Step back to your table.
Academic, oh, academic innovation, right.
So Laurie, do you want to just do what's really important?
So we'd have to do the Union 50 and warrants tonight? And then maybe we can all get back to me and let me know what you're interested in, generally speaking? Does that sound about fair?
Laurie, do you want to give something up, say it now so that other people know?
I'm, well, how about this? Union 50, are we comfortable with?
It's the three of you guys.
The three of us, the secretary, the vice chair, and the chair.
Yes.
Okay, so that's set? And then warrants?
Right, is there anyone else that's basically around that can run in and sign warrants?
I want to take my name off.
Right.
You don't want to come back? What is that?
So I hate to say, you want to be off too?
No, no, I'm...
Oh. That makes a lot of sense to have Ann, myself, and Dana.
Sure.
Okay.
That sounds good. Okay, so that's a check.
Maybe Judy can be a backup.
And Judy can be a backup?
My time's flexible.
Perfect. All right, so we'll add that.
And that's the same.
Okay, and then we'll be thinking about start time, academic excellence. Anyone else need to come off a committee? Want to come off a committee? Looking at you, Maggie, with the high school council?
I will, I will join the high school council.
I'm off high school PTO.
But Ann is between...
I'm just backup because you're the head person.
Yeah, I'm still on it.
Personnel, did we meet and I forgot to go?
Yeah, that was a big one too.
Oh, yes, I will continue to do that. Okay.
So Andrew, that's a sick thing.
Is that, is that a Maggie or would...
That's a Maggie. Oh, because I'd be happy to...
It's pretty unusual.
It's an unusual, it's not an often meeting.
It's, okay, just because it's only sort of in my area, but that's okay.
She was there.
Oh, I was there.
Okay.
Now we make sure that everyone who's on it was invited.
Policy?
Think about it.
What, we talked about the work of the policy committee will be activated this year.
Right.
That's usually a pretty active...
Yeah. Is that a committee you would like to be part of?
I'd be happy to, as I, as I said to a number of people, I'm happy to do anything.
You're coming off, Maggie?
I would be happy to come off of policy and offer my slot to Judy.
Okay.
We'll do that then. Thank you.
Oh, please.
I think that's a good start and we can all kind of talk about it afterwards. Let me know if you have any interest, especially in these new ones.
I'd love to see Laurie and Ann continuing capital.
We're fine with that. We're fine with that.
Oh, see where it says challenge success?
Yes.
And it says Mike Lee?
Yes.
I'd be happy to do that.
Right. Okay. I mean, if, if that's something you'd like to do, that's fine. I do, I do go to the meetings because I'm one of the parent people there, but I'm happy to serve as your backup. Yeah.
I think you didn't take Spanoff because it's not...
It doesn't exist anymore.
Yep. All right, so I think that's a good start.
So you want us to let you know
Let me know.
of these new four, which ones?
Yeah.
Yep, communications, school start time, employee benefits, and academic innovation.
Yep. And anything else that is a change that you want to come off of?
I am happy to continue to, it's not on the list, but the healthcare subcommittee.
Perfect, that's excellent.
So that's the whole OPEB and employee benefit, the whole big package?
Yes.
Lovely, thank you.
And we need a Sherburne person.
Yes, Claire? Okay.
We'll see.
Okay.
Do daytime.
So we'll put you as, with a sub? Is there, is there anyone who wants to serve as a sub?
Well, we'll talk about it.
Judy?
Because that's the right...
Yeah.
We'll do that offline. Okay, and I'm comfortable with everything else coming offline if that's...
Benefits will be natural for you.
What?
Employee benefits.
Yeah, that is. That's something I actually, one of the few things I know something about.
So let's, and I'll just...
Right, okay.
And you know that Jenny, academic innovation's interested in that.
And you were interested, yeah, you said that. Okay, so that's good. All right, thank you very much. That is terrific. And then the consent agenda. Any holds?
I would like to hold DSCF, but just have a couple of questions.
Okay, we will hold DSCF. Terrific. Any other holds?
I need, I just need, oh, actually, sorry, never mind.
And Laurie, usually you read out what's part of these.
Oh, okay.
So I agree.
Okay, so during the motion? Or just now, the consent agenda now is the appointment of the DS Regional Treasurer, the WSHG appointment, the approval of minutes, May 1st, 2018, the field trip, and the athletic and music department donations. Good?
Right.
Okay.
So I will move to accept the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right. My questions on DSCF. One was the pep band. Is that a club? Is that an ongoing cause? What is pep band?
So pep band would be something that Janice Berry would run occasionally at some of our athletic events. And it would not have any associated stipend with it, she knows that. And it would involve a small group of kids to provide for some increased school spirit. We had an initial larger proposal and that was then scaled back to having a few pieces, some of which we actually have borrowed from other places. And these students would perform at school events.
So what does the $3,000 go for?
Equipment.
Equipment.
Some drum equipment, some musical instruments.
A sousaphone instead of a tuba.
The plan is obviously that this would be successful. And if so, then it would go to ACED.
Great.
Yeah.
And then, could someone just please tell me what Google augmented reality is?
Google?
For the $21,000.
So that's the equipment where students are able to use their phones. They used to see the goggles, but now they can use their cell phones to actually have either images. You know, for example, if you're not going to travel to Paris to go to a museum, you can have the artifact in the museum travel to you. You can use your phone to get closer and go around it.
It's like a virtual reality. It's quite realistic. If you haven't seen them, it's amazing. It's very much 3D and you can move around. So if you went to the pyramids, for example, you can move around and see. It's very, very cool.
There's actually a video that the middle school faculty created based on a visit that Google did here where they got tested so they could show that with use.
And it sounds like it's come a long ways, even in the two years. I, I saw it two years ago and they did still, they brought the, the phones. So they're allowing the kids to use their phones now?
Yeah, well, you can use their phones, you can use an iPad. But it's really pretty neat. You're just like one of those scan bars on the floor on a piece of paper. So there's nothing there, but behind the iPad, it's like the image is there. It's just so neat.
So you don't mind sharing that with us? That'd be great.
That's great.
Very cool.
And challenge success, $12,000 from DSCF to the district?
I think that that's, that's, that's been their standard request, I believe, from DSCF. And DSCF has been supporting them like that in past years, no?
Right, but usually we hear what it's for or what they're going to do.
Yeah, so it's a continued consultation and...
The trips, the trainings in Stanford.
Yeah, well, in the past, not this year.
But for next year it's something else.
Speakers, speaker series, some opportunities for trainings that take place within, because we're now a much bigger team. And some consultation work with challenge success out of Stanford. In the past, we've brought Denise Pope out.
While you're on a roll, can, can you also talk to the innovating teaching and learning in Dover Sherburne and the guidance expansion of professional knowledge in college counseling?
Yeah, so the, the guidance expansion of college knowledge has been something we've done now for four or five years. And it's a number of different guidance counselors will then plan regional trips to areas. So let's say we'll, we'll cover a series of southern schools. So they'll go and have formal trips to UNC Chapel Hill, to Duke, to Elon. You know, they'll tackle that whole area, the Midwest, West Coast schools. So it's helping our counselors expand their knowledge and then they come back and they share that in meetings about things that they've learned about respective schools. Part of what we also do is when we look at the schools that students apply to and we look to see are there gaps or there places where we're not as familiar with some of these schools? And we try to put together regional trips.
Or they're not familiar with our students.
Right.
We're a small school system, so this is a great opportunity for them to make a personal connection. Same as in my, when I was a high school principal, same deal. It's really good, really helpful.
What was the other one, Dan?
The teaching and, the other district-wide, right?
You want to talk about that?
Sure, so that, that is going to provide the opportunity, they said, to in my report, to send the five district leaders to Finland to do the research. So they'll be visiting, what's that?
Who gets to go?
Not me. Which means I'll be holding down the fort for the whole...
You'll have one hand in each building and one in each building.
Who is it?
So the, the grant was for, was for five building leaders.
The building leaders.
Right.
Four building leaders and the central office leader.
Was that what it was?
Tends to be in charge of teaching and learning.
But, of course, the superintendent trumped everything. I, I went, so these guys asked me about this. It was a really, really beneficial trip for me. I went with a group of superintendents and state representatives. It really did shape our thinking. It really did shape our thinking about how we, how we run our schools, and frankly, my conversations with Scott about the recess were influenced by those trips. Recession is very important in Finland, and it makes a difference. I truly believe that. So that's just one tiny little example. There are a million ways that we can learn from them, and it's really important that the principals be there together, or the leadership of this district be there together so that they can have exchanges. And our hope is that we have somebody who serves almost as a consultant to facilitate those conversations. But they should have opportunities to visit schools, their teacher colleges, which are amazing, really amazing opportunities, secondary, primary schools, conversations with parents, teachers. So I think it'll be a great experience. It was really awesome that DSCF got on board with this. It was a hard sell because it's a big ask, but I think that there are going to be many rewards.
That's great. It's amazing.
Lasting rewards. It's awesome.
Thank you, DSCF.